Going. Right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning Committee meeting, Wednesday, the 12th of November. Before we start, if I can just do the usual live stream announcement. So good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of Gravesend Borough Council, a planning committee. I intend to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube and recorded. Recording will be updated on YouTube within two working days where it can be accessed by everybody. Members, can you please use the microphone in front of you when talking and ensure that your microphone is switched off once you've finished speaking? Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. And that also includes the representatives for and against the applications. Please note that council's visual equipment may on some occasions focus on or near the public gallery. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If as a member of the public, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a council staff member in attendance, and we will try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate by the nearest fire exits and make your way to Community Square outside the main reception doors. Thank you. That brings us on to the second item, which is apologies for absent.
We've received no apologies.
To sign the minutes of a previous meeting which was held on the 22nd of October, can I sign these meetings as minutes? Thank you. I see general agreement. Declarations of interest. I think we're familiar with this, but declare any interest members may have in the items contained on this agenda. When declaring an interest, a member must state what their interest is. Any statements of interest? No. Right, that then moves us on to consider whether any items in part A should be considered in private or any items in part B in public. I have no reason to do that. So that brings us on to six, item six, where there are three planning applications. I intend to move them around slightly, so we will take six B, which is 256 Singlewell Road, Gravesend first. Then we will take six A, which is the former Tollgate Hotel, and then we will move on to six C, Carl Ekman House. Right, so I will then move straight away on to six B, which is 256 Singlewell Road. If I just can explain how we are going to proceed. The officer will introduce this item. Then I will ask members of the committee if there are any points of information or clarification that is required in the presentation of this item. When we've cleared that, and I will also invite any other members if they have any comments. Once that's done, we will then move on to those speakers for the application. I believe there's one for and one against. Those speakers will come forward to the mic. They will have three minutes to make their comments. And then again, can members of the committee can ask questions, seek points of clarification or information. Then we will move on to discuss the item itself. Many thanks. So I will move on then to 256 Singlewell Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And this application relates to the erection of a single-story front extension to an existing outbuilding with roof lights at 256 Singlewell Road. This slide shows the site outlined in red. The outbuilding to the rear is shown in its approved form. This satellite image shows the site currently. The existing canopy shown does not benefit from planning permission, and as such, its existence should not be taken into consideration when determining this application. The local planning authority will address this unauthorized development upon conclusion of this application. It does, however, give an indication of where the front extension is proposed to be built. This slide shows the site layout as approved by 2021 1562 and the existing situation with the unauthorized canopy to the front. This slide shows a computer-generated image of the proposed front extension to the outbuilding. And this drawing shows the roof plan of the proposed extension. This slide shows the front and north elevations. And this plan shows the extension from the southern side and the rear. A previous application to enclose the area of the current unauthorized canopy was refused due to the impact on the neighbour to the north from the increased scale of the building, resulting in a dominant building with a non-domestic appearance, detrimental to the enjoyment of the gardens of the neighbouring properties. This slide shows the increase in floor area. The increase is approximately 54 square meters, which is around 44% larger. As set out in the report, the gym area shown benefits from a planning permission granted this year for a sui generis use and can be used for both commercial and residential purposes. To conclude, the recommendation to planning committees to refuse the application for the reasons set out on the slide before you.
Thank you. I'm looking at members of the committee. Has anybody seeking information or clarification? No, thank you. So I will now move on to the speaker for the application is Oliver Neary. Thank you. When you're comfortable, be guided by the lights in front of me. You have three minutes. When the light goes to amber, you have one minute left. When it goes to red, you must finish immediately. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Oliver Neary of Graham Simkin Planning, representing the applicant, Mr Mun Darival, Director of Mun's Fitness. We recognise and appreciate the officer's detailed assessment. However, we respectfully disagree with the recommendation before you. It's important to note that the officer confirms that the proposal would not result in any harm to neighbouring amenity, outlook, privacy, garden size, and raises no objection in respect of parking and highways. Also, the use of the building should not be considered as part of this application, as this has been addressed as part of 2025 0547. The sole matter before members today therefore relates to the character and scale. I intend on making three key points. First, this revised proposal directly responds to the reasons for the refusal of application 2025 0152. The height's been reduced by 0.6 metres, which is now lower than the existing structure, and the roof form has been amended to introduce a pitched roof, which is more sympathetic to the host dwelling. These amendments reduce visual bulk and improve design quality, as recognised in paragraph 6.4 of the officer's report. Given that the existing structure was not judged visually dominant, it would be unreasonable to conclude that a lower structure improved in design quality now gives rise to such harm. Second, the outbuilding remains demonstrably subservient. The main dwelling is substantial in scale with a generous internal floor area of 214 square metres with large garden provision. Even with this modest extension, the outbuilding would only represent 29% of the entire plot minus the dwelling, as well as a small proportion of the dwelling's footprint, whilst continuing to function as an ancillary space. The council's Household Extensions and Alterations Design Guide requires outbuildings to be subordinate, retain garden space, avoid primarily primary residential occupation, and avoid amenity harm. All of these criteria are considered to have been satisfied, which is confirmed within the assessment. Furthermore, the proposed outbuilding is of a comparable scale to others along Singlewell Road, where 27 of the 27 other properties feature similar structures, and it's therefore not considered to be out of keeping with the street's character. Finally, the development provides tangible site-specific benefits, enhances the appearance of the garden by replacing the temporary canopy with a high-quality domestic structure, and provides a quiet space for the applicant's parents, who increasingly find the gym environment less suitable due to their age-related needs. The proposal therefore promotes positive residential use without intensifying the commercial activity. On balance, and having regard to paragraph 135 of the MPPF, we submit that the proposal represents a proportionate, contextually appropriate, and visually improved form of development, consistent with the development plan when read as a whole. We respectfully invite members to reach a balanced conclusion and approve the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss Neary. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments? No, you may escape. Well done. Thank you. Right, we will now move on to speaker against the application, which is Paul Ferdinand. Would like to come forward. And again, same situation applies whenever you're comfortable and ready. Be guided by the lights. Three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Ferdinand, and I reside with my wife at 248 Singlewell Road. We are direct neighbours to the subject property. Planning application 2025 0557 does not adequately address the material reasons given by Gravesend Planning Department for the refusal of permission to its predecessor application 2025 0152. Permission was refused because the extension would be excessive in bulk and mass along the northern border, resulting in a development out of scale and appearance with the surrounding properties and outbuildings. This refusal made it clear that the size and character will be out of keeping with the domestic scale of the area. I believe this still stands true. A modicum reduction of height will not negate this and does not address at all the total length of the aggregate outbuildings along the shared border. As with its predecessor, in my opinion, this application fails to meet the appropriate planning requirements. The proposed extension will adversely impact the direct neighbours. The applicant, I assume inadvertently, admits this in planning statements 6.26 and 6.27, which imply that privacy, daylight and outlook will be adversely impacted for the neighbours on the same side of the garden to the dwelling. Regarding the replacement of the temporary canopy with a permanent structure. Garden space is not infinite. New developments must be of an appropriate scale for the neighbourhood. The unlawful existing canopy should be removed. This has been agreed. But it should not be replaced with an even bigger permanent building. Please note that the removal of the canopy has not even been started, despite the assurance given to Gravesend Planning Department on page 11, section 6.2 of this application, which stated that the canopy is in the process of being removed at the time of this application, dated the 3rd of June. In consideration of the aforementioned, the other concerns raised are still detailed in my written objection, and the fact that Gravesend Planning Department's existing reasons for refusal have not been adequately addressed. I respectfully request that this submission is refused. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Ferdinand. Members of the committee. Lyn.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I've read this planning application several times, and I've listened carefully to both speakers. And in my opinion, I would like to call for a site visit, please.
Thank you. So what we're looking for is, now, I'm going to ask Shazad to explain, it's not site visit, site inspection, and exactly what the difference might be.
Thank you, Chair. So the constitution allows members of the planning committee to either call for a site inspection or a site visit. The difference between the two is that a site inspection is members-only, a site visit allows the members of the public to be involved.
Right, so councillor, are you looking at a site inspection then for just members of the committee and any councillors?
Right, I shall rephrase that and do a site inspection. Yes.
Councillor Jassell, Sir Mayor.
Ah, yes, I'd like to second that. I think that's quite important. I mean, I you know, I understand exactly what Mr Ferdinand's saying. However, in the context of this, only seeing one objection, letter of objection, doesn't seem quite proportionate enough for me to make a decision. So I think we should defer, do a site inspection. Let us go and get our head around it, I think, in the dynamics. I'd second rather than it being dealt with tonight.
Thank you, colleague. I'm looking around at other councillors. Is there general support for the idea of a site inspection? Can you indicate? I think I've seen certainly sufficient numbers. So what I would suggest then is asking Shazad the process for the site inspection.
Thank you, Chair. So we'll liaise through committee section in terms of arranging a date for the site inspection, and obviously with the applicant and their agent. And a date will be agreed in due course. That will be communicated. And then after the site inspection, the application can be brought back to the following planning committee. So for now, the application is deferred.
Thank you. By custom and practice, in my experience, these would usually take place on a Saturday morning.
Subject to the availability, members, yes.
Thank you. So we will now then delay any decision on this until members of the committee have had the opportunity to visit the site, look at the issues involved, and look at the size of the proposal. So thank you very much, Mr Ferdinand. I'm sorry that it's been delayed, but I think that's probably for best. Thank you. So. Sorry. Yeah, so if there's anybody who are not directly involved in the other two applications, if you'd like to leave, escape or stay and be entertained, it's entirely up to you. But we will move on in a minute to consider the application 6A. Thank you, colleagues. So we're now going to consider 6A, which is the former Tollgate Hotel, Watlington Street, Gravesend, which we are all familiar with and, I think, seen in previous correspondence and applications. Thank you. Who would like to state this? Again, many thanks. Off you go.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to the demolition of the existing buildings to provide an EV charging hub and petrol filling station, including 24 charging bays and supporting electrical infrastructure, 12 charging upstands, three substations and two network cabinets, six pump islands with canopy above, a forecourt shop, amenity building, customer parking, two air and water spaces and associated hard standing and landscaping, and will be accessed from the Rooton Road Eastern A2 roundabout junction. This slide shows the wider site as outlined in red. The A2 coastbound can be seen at the bottom of the slide, and the access will be taken from the existing access and will be widened. This slide shows a satellite image of the site from this year for context. It shows the site of the former hotels, separate hotel buildings and associated hard standing, and the A2 to the south. Prior to being purchased by Highways England for the A2 Bean to Cobham widening scheme, which was completed in 2009, the site was in use as a hotel and restaurant with conferencing and event facilities. The Tollgate closed around 2006. This slide shows the front of the hotel as it is now. This slide and the next few slides show photos of the site and illustrate the poor condition of the buildings and the overgrown nature of the site. This slide shows some site photographs of the rear and side of the existing buildings. These photos show the hotel accommodation as it is now. The top photo shows the southern end of the hotel block which faces the A2, and the bottom photo shows a detached building in the middle of the site. This slide shows the proposed layout plan. To the west of the site, you have the parking area. To the centre of the site, you have the EV charging area, the store and cafe sales building, and to the east of the site, you have the conventional filling station. These are the proposed elevations of the sales building. The proposed materials are brick cladding, external doors to be painted to match the cladding. The awning is to be still painted in white and fascia to be painted grey. There will be green LED banding, there will be a green LED banding to the perimeter, the glazing and the shop front will be finished in grey. The canopy to the petrol filling station will be covered by a bespoke canopy incorporating PV panels. A condition will be imposed to ensure full details of materials are submitted prior to the works commencing. This slide shows the proposed floor plans of the sales building. The submitted application form states that the number of proposed full-time employees will be 17, and the number of part-time employees will be 13. The applicants have confirmed that the site will be operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This computer-generated image shows the entrance to the site. It's worth noting that any signage would be considered under a future advertisement consent application. This slide shows the petrol filling station looking south towards the A2. This slide shows the parking and waiting area to the west of the sales building. This slide shows the parking and waiting area to the west of the sales building. This is a computer generated image which shows the site from the coastband exit of the A two. And this slide sets out the proposed planting. A seed and green roof is proposed for the sales building with native planting across the site, including a proposed orchard to the east of the conventional filling station. The proposal delivers improvements in terms of landscaping and this slide sets out the different elements proposed, including the amounts. I'll give you a second to read that. Yeah. The site is located within the Green Belt as defined within the local plan core strategy. The site also meets the grey belt definition set out in the National Planning Policy Framework and the requirements of grey belt set out in paragraph one five five of the MPPF. The proposed development will be located on previously developed land and will not result in substantial harm to the openness of the Green Belt. The overall volume of development and footprint will be reduced by approximately seventy five percent. The amount of hard standing on the site will marginally increase by just under one percent. It therefore meets the exception paragraph one five four G of the MPPF. The proposed development is also considered to be local infrastructure and therefore meets exception one five four H three of the National Planning Policy Framework. As stated previously, advertising is not included in the application as it will require its own advertisement consent application. A signage strategy for the site will be required by condition. In terms of transport, the parking is considered sufficient, the widening of the access is acceptable. There will be six covered cycle spaces, which is acceptable and no undue impact on the highways network. Both KCC and National Highways have been involved in considering the highway matters and both agree the application can proceed subject to the imposition of conditions to secure the required mitigation. In addition to the standard conditions such as time limit, documents, plans, the following pre commencement conditions are to be imposed. Materials, hard and soft landscaping, drainage details, contamination, archaeology and construction environment management plan. Other relevant conditions to be imposed include restrictions on the use of sales building, trees, noise, ecology, archaeology, highway safety, lighting, refuse and storage and signage strategy. To conclude, the recommendation to planning committee is to delegate the application to the head of planning to grant permission subject to the imposition of planning conditions to be agreed in consultation with the Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you.
Many thanks. Right, colleagues on the committee, any points of clarification or information?
Councillor. Thank you. Sorry, I've just looked at my page. I'm hoping that this has just been misunderstanding something. I'm hoping you might be able to explain seven point eight eight. In the summary, it says the predicted noise levels associated with the forecourt activity will be below existing ambient noise levels. And in my head, I'm going, there's a disused site. How can a new business, a new, how can the noise levels be less than that of a disused site?
So it's ambient noise levels, i.e. the general noise in that area. And that's taking into account existing noise levels that are generated by the traffic movement. So you'll hopefully know that there's the A two roundabout, a toll gate, et cetera, there and the slip roads, there's sufficient noise generated there in any case. And what effectively that's saying is this is within those limits. It's not increasing the noise levels.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just struggling because, I mean, it says in the document there that it's going to be less. But we're adding where at the moment there is nothing. So how can the noise reduce? So I honestly don't understand. But thank you.
Thank you. Les.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've been all through the paperwork. This is taking me ages because there's such a lot. The National Highways have got a hell of a lot of, and also the police and the KCC and fire brigade have got a lot of different actions required. And they said they would be done on the third of the ninth twenty five. What we're asking, what you're asking is to give delegated powers to the planning officer. What insurance can he give us, this committee, that all them actions have been dealt with correctly?
Thank you, Chancellor Peterson. So the revised recommendation is that the permission be granted subject to the imposition of planning conditions, which effectively would cover all those points raised by third party consultees, statutory consultees, matters raised by the case officer within the report as well. And from a professional point of view, I would ensure that they're included in the proposed decision. And your safeguard would be that I couldn't issue the decision without the agreement of the Chair and Vice Chair because they'd have to be consulted.
Les, you want to come back?
Yes, please, Chair. Thank you. On another, that's fine. Thanks for your answer on that. I'm happy with that. So what I'm rather concerned with is the other businesses really located near this site that's going to be really affected, i.e. the CL garage and Nell's CAF. What safeguarding have we put in place for them to try to help their businesses as well because they've been there some considerable time? And they've served this a great deal. So I'm wondering what provisions we put in for them.
Thank you, Chair. If the legal officer wants to come in after me, more than happy to. But just from a professional planning point of view and I set out within the report itself, competition between businesses is a material planning consideration. It's free market. Businesses are allowed to be generated, new businesses are allowed to come, old businesses are allowed to compete with those, et cetera. It's not for the planning system to intervene and stop competition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just to really echo what Shazad said, it's not for planning to dictate who customers choose to take their business to. That's entirely up to them. They may be longstanding buildings, businesses, sorry, not buildings. But it's not for the planning system to intervene and say that you can't have a free market where people can make their own choices.
Thank you. Les, do you want to come back?
Yeah, I understand it, Chair, but basically when you're going along, like we just seen the signage for the, if it's granted, that the signage there, I'm wondering what sort of signage, if you're coming along the A two, A two, them get, what signage for them garages and businesses to be noticed off the A two, would we provide for them if we could?
Shazad.
Thank you, Chair. So in terms of what signage we would provide, we wouldn't provide any signage whatsoever for any business on the A two. It falls within the National Highways remit, Highways England. It would be for them to agree or modify whatever signage they have on the A two itself. So from memory, if it serves me right, they have a number of signs along the A two and M two pointing to specific locations where they advise motorists, you can refuel, for example. From memory, not every single business is advertised, so to speak, on those. Only a few minor key locations are presented on those and it would be for National Highways to decide whether or not they wanted to include BP's garage on their signage, if at all.
Thank you. I'm looking at Members Committee. Any further questions? I see none. So we'll now move on, if we can, to the two speakers for the application. So Jason, Lowe's, if you'd like to come forward. I apologize. Andrew Mac.
That's okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair and Committee, for the opportunity to speak and support of this application, seeking the redevelopment of a redundant Green Belt site that lies at the gateway to Gravesend. The site is brownfield, previously developed, that has been in a dilapidated state for nearly twenty years now. The principle for its redevelopment is supported in both the local plan and national policy, making effective use of brownfield land. Gravesham Borough Council, similar to other authorities and UK Parliament, has declared a climate change emergency. This underscores the need to provide alternative transport options that can reduce CO2 emissions. The provision of twenty four ultra fast chargers will assist in accommodating the needs of EV motorists on the national highway network, providing on the go easy access charging. The chargers are able to provide up to an eighty percent charge within fifteen minutes. The scheme will dramatically reduce, as has been stated, the existing built form by seventy five percent, which provides a substantial improvement to openness, which is a key consideration for Green Belt development. The site is also considered to be grey belt, which is a recent change that seeks to support specific development in the Green Belt to stimulate growth. The application will not lead to any detrimental impacts on the character of the area or indeed the wider landscape. Further benefits of the redevelopment of the site are local employment opportunities. BP always prioritizes jobs to the local community first. Improved landscaping, biodiversity net gain in excess of the ten percent requirement on site. And in accordance with national policy objectives, promoting low emission transportation, seeking to reduce range anxiety issues, which are and have been a major issue to encourage people to switch to EV transport. The application involved extensive pre applications inquiries with both Gravesham Borough Council and National Highways to ensure that the impacts of development can be accommodated, providing a vital service to motorists. Further interaction with the community prior to any submission involved consultation with local ward councillors. This actually led to changes in materials that were being proposed. There was a newspaper advert and website consultation of over two thousand local residents in Gravesend. The results of that consultation showed an enormous level of support of in excess of ninety two percent of all the respondents for the proposed development. BP used this as an excellent opportunity to regenerate this site, creating an attractive gateway development for Gravesend. The development also aligns with national policy objectives to dramatically reduce CO2 emissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr McNaulson. Right, looking around colleagues, Lyn.
That's lovely. Thank you very much. It all sounds very positive that you've just said because my question would have been, and it still is, the employment. How many vacant, employment vacancies for local people do you think might be? And will you, if you can, use local materials to help people with businesses in Gravesham?
I can confirm that BP's policy is to offer the employment to the local community first. I think it was mentioned that there was seventeen full time and thirteen part time vacancies that would be the result of any development. So they would be offered to the local community first.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chair. Looking at the report, there's going to be twenty four EV charging stations and sixty three parking spaces. Would there be room in the future to add more EV charging stations if those needed? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Peter.
This is a hybrid application. So at the moment, there's a petrol element to it, but it's predominated by EV. Effectively, the provision of parking is the ability to future proof. So as EV purchasing and motoring increases, there will be scope within the site to be able to accommodate that. This is the first sort of step into that, but it will be led by the demand aspect.
Thank you. Lyn, do you want to come back?
Yes, could you just come back on that point? Lots of people now with, I don't drive, so I don't know about cars, but I do know you do have to plug them in these days. So when you've got your capacity of twenty four, did you say, and now people are charging their, what, what space for waiting and queuing up will you have for another six cars that want to go on the charging points? Does that make sense?
There is, there is general parking within the system and within the site. So there's a generous parking aspect, which I was referring to the gentleman there, that if EV ownership increases, then some of that, or indeed ultimately the petrol filling aspect could be removed to provide even more EV charging. So it's on that basis. In terms of motorists on the road, there's two applications that are out there that come with virtually all EV cars now. So there would be a BP dedicated app which shows the occupancy rates. But there's also something called ZapMap, which is for every EV vehicle. And it will tell you where the nearest stations are, what availability there is. So in essence, that can remove queuing capacity as well, just through that notification, which allows people to sort of manage their journey a little bit more. So if they think they've got thirty percent, they don't need to fill up or recharge right now, they could go a little further and it just allows them to have that choice, which is a little bit more flexibility than there is currently in terms of petrol filling normally.
Thank you. Councillor Peterson.
Thank you, Chair. Just the clarification really, if I could ask the question, in the papers notes, I noticed that the canopy is going to be lower than normal. Is that, is that because you're not allowing HGVs to use that station? Because it says it won't be used for higher vehicles. Thank you.
Correct. This is not to cater to HGVs. I think the existing facility, the Shell facility, does cater to that and there will be others that cater to HGVs. This wasn't for that, which is sort of showing the emphasis of what it's taking in terms of and in respect of the EV charging scenario and it being an EV led scheme.
Thank you. I've seen no other questions. So thank you, Mr McNaulson. Thank you very much. So can we then move to the second speaker for the application, Jason Lowe's?
Ready? Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Jason Lowe's. I'm a partner at Rapese and I'm BP's planning consultant. As the committee will be aware, the MPPF normally restricts development in the Green Belt. However, it allows it under some certain circumstances. BP has clearly demonstrated in its application to the mission why its proposal should be consented as development is appropriate in the Green Belt. Your offices have drawn your attention to three reasons in particular. Redevelopment on previously developed land, local transport infrastructure, which can demonstrate a requirement for a green location and that the land is situated on grey belt. Sorry, I was about to say green belt again. Your offices have reviewed the relevant policies and the development proposals in detail. They've confirmed that the development is appropriate development of the Green Belt and should be supported as such. We agree with their analysis on this point, but even if you were to take a different view, you should also note that there are a range of significant planning benefits amounting to very special circumstances which arise in respect to this development. Some of these have been highlighted by Mr McNaulson. They also indicate you should grant planning permission, not least that there is a significant identified need for the development in accordance with national policy objectives. The development represents significant investment in any EV infrastructure. It will support the nationwide shift away from the internal combustion engine. The proposal will create jobs and it represents a ten million pound investment for BP. The development will be powered entirely by renewable energy. The site is a key gateway to the district and has long been vacant. This proposal will bring it back into very beneficial use. This proposal will bring it back into very beneficial use with well-designed and well-landscape new development, and it will remove the risk of trespass and antisocial behaviour which has affected the site over the years. As members will be aware, section 38, subsection 6 of the Planning and Compulsory Purchase Act requires applications to be determined in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise. Your officers have concluded that the proposals are in accordance with the development plan. Further taking into account all material considerations, in particular the MPPF, planning should be granted subject to conditions. And that's the correct conclusion to reach. The proposal does accord with the development plan as an entirely accordance with the MPPF. There are no reasons for refusing the development in these terms. Indeed, the proposal will bring forward a wide range of planning benefits, such that planning permission should be granted without delay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Mr Lowes. I'm looking around colleagues. Councillor Elliott?
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to praise the, if the artistic projections are accurate, the way that it sits lower than what the Target Hotel does and being sort of more obscured within the landscape, I think is really good. You mentioned renewable energies, I can't remember the exact sentence you used. I can't see within the documentation, I might have missed it, but do we plan to have soda panels on the roof, so I'm just wondering?
No, it'll be a cedum roof, but the renewable energy provided off-site essentially, both to the EV chargers and to the development as a whole.
Sorry, can I correct that, there are PV panels on the conventional fuel station element, so that kind of means I think you include PV. Thank you.
Right, thank you. councillor Scotland?
Thank you Chair, just going back, in the plans it's saying about an orchard, wine orchard, and if you are growing an orchard, what are you growing? And will that food be going to food banks? Thank you.
It's referred to an orchard because it's the type of trees that are there, but I think it's big enough to produce food. It's there for biodiversity and for the landscaping purposes, the media purposes.
Right, thank you. Any further comments? No, thank you Ms Lowes, thank you for your comments and support. Right, colleagues, I now throw the application open to you if we have a proposal. There we are, any comments? Les?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Like you said up there, we are, this is not to agree the planning application, it's to give the delegated powers to the planning officer and yourselves. But I'm quite satisfied with the answer that the officer gave me tonight, the reassurance that all the actions are being actually, and will be correct. So therefore, I'm quite prepared to give the delegated powers to the officers and yourselves to make the right decision on this application. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. councillor Mellner?
Thank you Chair. As I said, I read this again and I've listened to the speakers, and to be quite honest, I think it's a good way forward for Gravesham, because it's, as it's been said, it's been delicate for a number of years. And we mustn't forget, I think something that councillor Pierson said, it gives people the opportunity, if they want to go up to Morrison's, as little as they can, because there's a car park there, and as long as they're not gone about 14 hours. But yeah, it is the way forward, we do need charging point, well I don't, but people do for their cars, and it is the way forward, so it's good on my part.
Thank you. councillor Jessom?
Yes, thank you Chair. I was fortunate enough to go along to the consultation day and, you know, follow this through for some time now. I think it's been, you know, you often get applications where everyone kind of gets bulldozed out of the way, but you know, I really would like to compliment the team on actually the efforts they've gone to take the public with them on this, I think it's quite commendable, but it's been a dead redundant area now, as you say, for 20 years, frankly, it's an eyesore coming into the borough. And something sensible done there is what it needs. And one of the interesting things is, and this is something that I picked up obviously which going through to the consultation event, was that this 80% charge in quite a limited amount of time, I mean, I must confess, I've now joined the EV club. And you know, that's a real game changer, so slightly biased there on that point, but it's, you know, it is a game changer and I think it's great for the borough, it's great for the environment and I'd like to see this get put forward as quick as possible.
Thank you.
I think. Thank you, just wanted to note that there's been an in on that site since the 1820s, so we're talking, is that 200 years? And while this isn't a material planning consideration, it's more of a kind of just a personal request, that whether there's any way you can pay homage to that, perhaps in the decor or something that you can do with the facilities you're providing there, just to sort of recognise the history of the site. Thank you.
Thank you, I think that point would be noted. Yes, councillor Wardle?
Thank you Chair. I recognise we need EV points, we need petrol stations, but do we need them together? I have some concerns with the fact that any accident, any car catching fire is right next to a petrol station, and although that might be minimal, it's still a concern I have.
Thank you councillor. Any comment on that?
The only comment I can make is it's not uncommon to find EV charging stations within the grounds of petrol stations, it's more and more common that you'll find EV charging points located immediately within the grounds of petrol stations, whether they're in urban areas, whether they run motorways, a roads etc, it's a common occurrence across the country.
Thank you. I'm looking around, I've seen no, councillor Wardle, do you want to come back?
Yeah, I know it's common, it's in Morrison's, exactly the same thing, but that doesn't mitigate any concerns I've got.
I think that's a fair point. Right, I see no other speakers, can I ask if somebody wants to pose the question to be put? And I've seen proposed and seconded, so shall we move then to the recommendation that we have in front of us, which you can read? Those in favour of the recommendation, please indicate. Right, I think that's unanimous. Thank you. Nobody against. Thank you very much. That then concludes the free plan applications. Reports of information, there are none. Plan applications? Oh, sorry. I thought it was all going very smoothly. No, you're quite right. So anybody who wants to escape at this point in time, as we have 6C to consider? Right, apologies colleagues. That then brings me on to 6C, Carl Ekman House. Ah, right, we're waiting for one member to return. Right, thank you colleagues, we are now going to start 6C, Carl Ekman House, which will be introduced by Richard.
Thank you Chair. The application is of Thule Street in North Leat and is for the conversion of the existing store and vacant area in the ground floor into an office space. Conversion of the separate store into a pram and cycle storage spaces with enhancements to communal areas and installation of secure doors between the entrance lobby and corridor. The front entrance landscape will also be updated from grass to resin surface with two types of wooden planters installed. This shows the location of the site in red, and this shows the existing street scene, and this shows the existing plans of the building. And this shows the differences, you'll notice you've got the, on the right hand side you've got the bike and pram store, and on the left hand side you've got the office space. These are the existing elevations, and these are the proposed enhancements. And again, here you can see the enhancements on the layout at the front of the building. Officer's view is the development complies with local and national planning policy and it is recommended that permission is granted subject to the conditions on screen before you. Thank you Chair.
Points seeking clarification, councillor Pierson?
Thank you Chair. Yes, thank you. I'm a little bit confused with this application to its office space underneath flats, is that right? And cycle store, pram store? And it's for emergencies only, as I understand, could you give us a little bit more information on what, for what emergency you have in mind?
Through you Chair. So the report in 7.7 highlights correctly, as you said there, that will be used in emergencies. At this point, we as planning authority are not sure what that will be, therefore we have suggested a office management plan that can be approved by condition, so we have full control and idea of how that will be used. Thank you.
Les?
Can I come back on it Chair, thank you. Yeah, it's a limited amount of, it's, it's a funny one this one, I can't get my head around it quite, but it's just for temporary use. So when it's not in use and it's just sitting idle, what is the upkeep of it for that? You know, for how do we, out of the council? Because obviously the changes have got to be made, it's going to cost money, the upkeep of it, how much is that going to cost please?
Thank you Chair, I'm sure the legal officer will correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going into the realms of non-material planning considerations, these are issues for planning committee, we don't deal with the budgets of the council, we deal with planning matters. But in respect of the floor space and its uses, it's been designed to, for the council potentially and potentially council partners to be able to use it on an ad hoc basis in an emergency, if there's an event that requires the use of that space. On the other hand, it could also potentially be used for meetings of residents for example, but as Mr Hart pointed out, that would be all subject to a management plan, that would be subject to a condition which is included within the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you want to confirm this?
Yeah, I can confirm exactly, which as I'd said, the cost of running that building is not for this committee, I'm sure you could share the concerns with your colleagues on other committees if that was a concern to you.
Right, I'm looking around to see if there's any other councillors or members wanting to comment. I can't see anybody, so again, I'm looking around a proposal for determination.
Could I propose?
Thank you, and I've seen seconded. So it's been proposed and seconded, shall we now put this recommendation to vote? Those in favour? Many thanks. Now, I'll try and get this right. So we're now on to number seven, reports for information, none. Number eight, plan applications determined under delegated powers, the schedule has been placed wherever. Number nine, any other business, there's no any other business, there's nobody to exclude, there's no items in private, so can I thank you all for coming along? Again, one of the, well maybe not again, but one of the quicker meetings and harmonious meeting. So many thanks for coming along and have a good rest of the evening. Thank you.